All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this meeting to order if everyone will please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. On May 1st, the year is going by extremely too fast. It'll be graduation here soon. So we're close to closing out another school year. Everyone's had a chance to review the February 6, 2023 closed session minutes and the minutes of our March 6, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting. So the first thing I'm gonna ask for a motion on will be the February 6, 2023 closed session minutes. If there's any changes, we can make those when we go in closed session later. If not, we entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries. Second, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our March 6, 2023 regular Board of Education meeting. If there is no changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion, second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. All right, moving on to matters of the public. Good news. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, and good evening. Mr. Prescott, if you'll come up. It's now time for our Rotary Student of the Month. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, we have Dylan Ward. Ms. Lanchy had this to say about Dylan. Dylan is relatively new to our school, enrolling in November of this year. Immediately, Dylan began making friends and immersing himself in our school's culture. Dylan is very hardworking and committed to his schoolwork. As a result, his grades have improved every quarter since he enrolled, most recently landing him on the principal's list for quarter three. He is kind and willing to help others. What his teachers and classmates enjoy most about Dylan is his sense of humor. Dylan exemplifies the attributes of a student athlete participating in both basketball and baseball at the middle school this year. We are so proud of his progress he's made. This year, he's a canes to the core. Congratulations, Dylan, Rotary Student of the Month. Next, from Pamlico County High School, we have Coralene Ellis, and Coralene has notified the principal that she cannot be here this evening. But I will quickly say that Ms. Holton had this to say about Coralene. Coralene is an exceptional young woman. She has taken a deep dive into high school and become very active and committed in many of the programs we have in place. Academically, she has high expectations and works so hard in her classes because she truly values learning. She's part of our ROTC program, including the academic team, Skills USA, and Battle of the Books, all participating in competitive dance. Coralene's friends describe her as a safe place and the one they can trust to depend on. She is honest, helpful, and hilarious. She treats everyone with genuine kindness, seeking the best in everyone for being exactly who they are. Her character sets her apart from her peers, and these are only a few of the reasons Coralene Ellis is deserving of the recognition of Rotary Student of the Month. Congratulations, Coralene Ellis, PCHS Rotary Student of the Month. There are good news for this evening. If you guys want to stay and enjoy the meeting, feel free to, but you're welcome.
All right, we do have public comment tonight, so I'm gonna read our public comment guidelines. The Pamlico County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. According to Policy 1326, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene vulgar or profane statements, personal attacks and insults, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or immediately threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. All right, we've got Ms. Vicky Mosley Jones has signed up, and she wants to speak on the Summer Lunch Program Coordination, Love Thy Neighbor Program. So looking forward to hearing about this.
We will.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, in 2018, the Love Thy Neighbor Program Incorporated, 501(c)(3) was established, and it was the summer lunch program. And this program was created in order to provide free bag lunches to children in Pamlico County who were out of school. Our theme was, "Out of school does not mean out of food." And we know that because Pamlico County is a desert, a food desert, we know that something like this is very important. It was very important. We did it in 2018 and 2019. Then when COVID hit, we did close down, but this year, we are restarting it. So I've been in contact with school personnel. Mr. Rice called me the other day and said that he would meet with the school nutritionists. I've contacted Ms. Jackson. I'm standing tonight because this is a public meeting, and I know that it's streamed, and I'm hoping that there are parents out there who are listening to this. And our goal is to be able to have mobile lunches. That means that they would be set up periodically throughout Pamlico County in areas where there are children and/or families. Preferably, we're gonna start with the churches, but we will be primarily headquartered at Bayboro Development Center. We received a grant for this program this year through the Hodges Education Foundation, and we're also soliciting other fundraisers. So we are, this program will start, it'll be Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, starting June 18th, and it will run, June 19th, and it will run through August 18th. We're looking for volunteers. We also would like permission to be able to send flyers to the schools, to the children. So I would need the number of students at each of the three schools, and then we will have flyers sent to go into their book bags. This is a great program, great people who are involved in it, and we hope that we, that it will be successful. I want to close by saying that as the education chair of the NAACP, this is a separate position that I have, we have requested a meeting, Mr. Prescott, with you and the community partners. We would like to have a meeting to get an update on just how things are going with the recommendations that have gone forth, what is happening in the schools in terms of diversity and equity for 2023. We would still like to get that information, so I'm hoping to hear from you soon. You told me you're gonna
Yep.
get back with me, and haven't had a response, so I'm looking forward to one. Okay? Thank you so much. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mosley Jones, if you're okay with it, once that flyer is approved, we can also put that on our social media platforms for each school also. That will probably help, because sometimes those flyers don't make it home.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure every child takes them home, but just in case.
What should I submit to?
Um, Tiffany. Yeah, get everything to Tiffany, and we'll get it approved. Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I think the first item on Ms. Jackson's superintendent report is gonna help you with the numbers of students who are in our schools. So with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Item 3.1 is the membership report as of April 27th, and you can see in your packet, we have a difference from the previous month at primary school of plus four, Anderson minus one, the middle school plus two, and the high school minus three, for an overall plus two. But we will also, Ms. Mosley Jones, be able to give you the individual classroom sizes too, so that you can have them separated too. So we'll give you, we'll do even better than that. Next, I would like to recognize a few different groups. I was gonna wait till miscellaneous, but I would like Ms. Katie Hardison, just kind of stand up so everybody can see you. This is our Teacher of the Year for this school year, who gets to come to all of our board meetings now, and she just sits there very quietly, and probably, I'm sure, goes back to her school and spreads all the good news from the board meetings. But I just wanted to recognize her and just kind of remind everybody while she's here. She's a go between the board and the folks in the school. So we thank you for coming to all these board meetings and for being an amazing teacher at the primary school. Okay? Thank you. And then I heard or saw on social media today that not only is it National College Decision Day, it's also National Principals Day. We celebrate, we get to celebrate people a lot around here. We celebrated, October was Principal's Month, and we celebrated you. But if y'all would just stand up, these are our amazing principals. Please stand up, and let's give them a big round of applause. Appreciate what you guys do every day. Several of us up here have done that job before, and so we know how hard it is, and you don't just work 7:30 to 3:30 like a lot of people think you do. There's a lot that goes on well after, like tonight. So anyway, we thank y'all so much for everything you do. All right, now moving along. Item 3.2, discuss the new school meeting. Last week, we had a great meeting. We had Robbie Fares from SFLNA, along with one of his architects, to come and meet with individual groups that we needed to talk to about some of the inside of the building. I think everybody left here even happier than when they got here, as far as the things that they were concerned about with maybe room space or making sure they had appropriate equipment or whatever. So after that, we had a board meeting so that he could then update the board. I know several of you were not able to come. Those that did come gave a lot of really great input. Robbie even called me today and was talking about some of the input that was put, that you, that you did let us know. That was live streamed, so it's, you know, it's on our website. You can go down and look, and you can see for either the board members or any of the public that want to see that, we have that there. So things are, things are moving right along. Still want to be a while before we see anything, but anyway. So we're glad to get that update from him. Item 3.3 and 3.4, I'm gonna ask Steve Curtis to step up and help with that. I was in a meeting last week, a regional superintendent meeting, and this came up. Wasn't anything that we had really been shared information about. One was the new formula for the low wealth district information, the formula that they use to fund us. And then the weighted student funding formula, which was majorly a shock to us. And I will tell you what I tell any political folks or anybody that comes. If you don't think we're a low wealth county, pick a bus. Pick any bus. Get on it, ride, and then tell me we're not low wealth. So anyway, with that, I will turn it over to Steve, just give a little bit of information that we got last week.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jackson. First, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the new Senate Bill 670, which is create new weighted student funding model. And as most of y'all know, right now, we get different pots of money for different areas within the school district. Classroom teachers, instructional support, non-instructional support, principals and assistant principals. There's about 20 or anywhere from 20 to 22 different pots of money that we get from the state of North Carolina. And there's a chart of accounts that goes with it and an allotment policy that is very specific on how that money can be used. This, this proposed new bill would basically consolidate the majority of these programs into one pot of money, and it would be based on the average daily membership of the school district. We've heard different things from different people, so it's still very early. I can tell you that it passed the first reading of the Senate on April the 10th, and now it's been referred to the Committee on Rules and Operations of the Senate, and that will be sometime this month, that that will happen. The majority of what we're hearing is that we're gonna get cut in funding substantially if this happens. And just to give an example, there was one report that came out, and it shows this year's current state allotment. And for us, this year's total state allotment is about $13.4 million. And based on this weighted allotment of ADM, average daily membership, that allotment would drop down to $10.6 million. So that's a $2.8 million decrease in state funding. And if that was to happen, we might as well just shut the door. I mean, we cannot function on a 21% decrease in state funds, and that's where our biggest pot of money comes from, is from the state. And again, it's very early. We don't know all the details, and I don't think the legislators have worked everything out yet. But it's very similar to how charter schools are operating. They get pretty much one big pot of money, and then they get a few additional ones, like for exceptional children, at-risk students. So it appears that this may be similar to that type of distribution of funds. But right now, all school districts in the state are up in arms, and it doesn't, the initial look doesn't look very good. And so we will just continue to monitor this and keep you updated as we get updates on this Senate bill. And again, if you want to go look at it, it's Senate Bill 670 is out there. Any questions on that?
It really looks like rural school districts are, all across the state, are getting hit the hardest. So we're not really sure why yet, but this formula is really, I mean, if you look at, right now, we have just been looking at the ones within our own region, and they're taking the biggest hits. So something we have to keep a close eye on, anyway.
Okay. All right, the other item I want to discuss was low wealth funding. We have, for years, we received low wealth funding back in the around 2010, 2012 area. We lost that low wealth funding, and then about five or six years ago, it started gradually coming back. And it appears from the preliminary reports we're getting from the state is that for the 2023-24 school year, our low wealth funding is gonna be cut substantially. Now, this isn't a huge pot of money. For this fiscal year, it's right at $101,000. But for next year, from what we've received so far from the state, is that would drop to $40,000. So that's $61,000 that we would be cut. And the low wealth formula is very complicated. It's based on county tax rate. It's based on density per square mile in the county, per capita income. There's a lot of factors that go into consideration. But again, I think the, this was a discussion at a superintendent's meeting last week, and they were up in arms over what they had been told. And so again, we'll have to keep an eye on this. If this new weighted formula comes into place, I'm not sure that low wealth will even be a factor. That may be eliminated and just included into the, the big pot of money, but we really don't know that right now. I guess bottom line is, we're not hearing anything good from the legislative session for the biennial budget for, for next year and the year after, and which is, always causes a lot of heartache, you know, when that happens. So again, we will continue to keep you updated on both this weighted funding formula and where the low wealth funding, you know, comes from. Right now, there's about, I think, 80 of the 115 school districts receive low wealth funding. And it's like Ms. Jackson said, don't tell me Pamlico County is not a low wealth county. Just, you can't tell me that. There's no way. So we need this money, and again, it doesn't sound like much, but that pays, you know, at least one full teacher salary and benefits, and then possibly part of a teacher assistant. So it's, you know, we always use that money for instructional personnel. So we definitely don't want to lose that money, plus obviously the weighted school fund formula either. Any questions? I'm just full of good news tonight. Henry had the good news. I got a bad one.
Mr. Curtis, do you anticipate that they'll, that we'll know more about this before the budget's approved?
Oh, yes. Yeah, they'll, they'll have to decide something before a budget is approved. And I don't know, you know, I don't know how that timeframe is gonna run this year. It's, it's very rare for them to approve a budget by June 30th, but we'll see how that goes. But I think they're, seems like they're at a pretty good pace right now, so, but this will have to be determined before, you know, because that'll have to be part of the entire state budget.
And what about the, the other two bills, the Charter School Funding Bill and the School Choice Bill? I mean, because they, they will affect funding also.
They will. The Charter School Omnibus Bill, I think it was pulled maybe last week, and Rachel, I'm gonna rely on you for some help on this. But I don't think that necessarily means that it's dead.
I think it's back on the schedule for next week, isn't it?
I'll look right now and see what the most up-to-date is on that.
And just to refresh the board, that Charter School Omnibus Bill means that we would have to share revenues that we receive with, in our case, Arapahoe Charter School for things like the ROTC program, where we get funding from the Navy, the NC pre-K program, where we get funding from the state. They don't have those programs down there, but yet, if this bill is passed, we would have to share that money with them. And there's others, too. Indirect costs we get from federal funds, sales and tax refunds. I looked at last year's numbers, and if it had been in effect last year, we would have had to pay them about $100,000. And that obviously would, would have been a big hit to us if we would have to have done that. The, as far as the scholarship fund, where parents can apply for funding for private homeschool, private schools, Christian schools, I think they're just expanding that to where there's really not a lot of income restrictions on who can apply for that money. Is that right, Rachel's? And so that obviously, too, would be a detriment, because that's gonna be state funding that's gonna go to these parents rather than coming to the school district.
And so that has the potential of really reducing ADM.
Oh, yes.
And so if this new student funding formula is based on ADM, then it all will work against us.
It's the combination, I think. And looking at the, the latest up-to-date from the General Assembly on House Bill 219, which is the Charter School Omnibus, it was pulled for, it was re-referred to the Committee on Education as how it stood on the 20th.
So there's four bills right there in Raleigh that are being discussed that would be detrimental to Pamlico County schools.
That's real bad.
Any questions about either one of those items? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And the Public School Forum is going to be doing a kind of a question and answer information session tomorrow that we're gonna participate in, I think, and there'll be some other folks that, according to this formula, are gonna be losing a substantial amount of money. So I look forward to seeing how that goes, and apparently, it's gonna be aired. So once we find out that information, too, we'll let you know. All right, so some happy news now. So last week, on April 26th, it was Administrative Professionals Day, and there were a lot of really great things that went on in the district. I know Pamlico County Schools gave all of the administrative assistants flowers and thanked them for all their work, because those of you that have ever worked in the school know. because those of you that have ever worked in the school know, keep the secretary happy, right principals? And everything will be smooth. That's your guard dog, that's your best friend. So we have some great ones, and we're very, very thankful for them, and we were able to celebrate them that day. Coming up, item 3.6, we have Teacher Appreciation Week. And it looks like it's a little bit later, but it's actually that first full week, which is May 8th through the 12th. And I know each school has some fun activities planned to celebrate their teachers and certified staff, and we'll also be doing that too. So be checking out social media and the website, because we'll be putting some things on there to celebrate all of our wonderful teachers. And the only item, the only thing I have for the miscellaneous item is Tiffany, or maybe through Laura, has asked if you plan to attend the Farm to School Week Special Luncheon, that's on May the 9th at 12:30 at the primary school, will you please email Tiffany and let her know? Oh, you want me to ask them right now? If you know right now, now would be good. May the 9th, 12:30 at the primary school, Farm to School Lunch. I mean, you gotta eat, right? You want to look at your schedules and maybe email me tomorrow or email Tiffany?
Email Tiffany.
Okay, so y'all email Tiffany. And if you can't, that's fine. If you don't RSVP, we'll know that's a regret. So, and maybe she could send out a reminder to y'all in the morning. That'll be good. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I think that is all I have.
Sure, yeah, I was going to ask if any board, usually with her, when she finishes, I always ask the board if they have any, anything they'd like to share.
Well, I took great pleasure in participating in the career fair at the high school as a college representative, but it was very, very, I think, informative for the students and beneficial. Also, my staff and I from the college played the Easter Bunny, and that was a joyous activity. We went around all the younger grades and passed out Easter eggs and jelly beans to both primary and Fred Anderson. Very interesting seeing the innocence of little kids. They just gravitated to the Easter Bunny and asked real informative questions in terms of why the Easter Bunny was so tall.
And why his ears were so little.
The other interesting comment was why did the Easter Bunny have sneakers on? So that was real great. And also, I was able to take part in the Jamaica feast at the high school. Very, very good food.
That's good.
Any other board members have anything they'd like to share?
I just want to personally thank each and every one of the principals, Ms. Holton, Ms. Carter-Moore, Ms. Savannah Alexander, I want to say Ellenberg, and Ms. Lanty. We surely appreciate you. Sometimes I may feel like it goes, what you do goes unnoticed, but it doesn't. We truly appreciate you, and we thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Any other board members? All right, thank you all. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4, our consent agenda. We only have one item on there for tonight, so everybody's had a chance to review that. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Moving on to instruction. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening. I'm here to really just present the CTE local application. On the agenda, I think autocorrect got us, it says loan application. We're not applying for a loan. I need one after all the good news from Mr. Curtis. But we are applying for our local application, which helps to fund our CTE program in the district. And so if you looked at the board packet that was shared with you, there was a forty-five page document on there. I was wondering why I was the only one listed, so I'm just kidding. We're not going to go through forty-five pages of mess, but we are going to talk a little bit about the local application and everything that that entails. It's basically a two-year application. The local application is done in two years. Last year, Mr. Spruill presented it. It is a result of a comprehensive local needs assessment. And from that needs assessment, it looks at all aspects of the school, from test data and indicators there to business and industry input and local needs, current technical student organizations, the whole gamut. And so that's written for two years, but we have to apply annually, because that is what helps to secure that funding through these state and federal funds. This past November, I was fortunate enough to be here and present a little bit about CTE and what we were doing in the district. We told you about these three goals. These goals came from that local application last year. They came from the comprehensive local needs assessment. And really, I would be remiss if I came in and just talked about the very slight changes to the plan and didn't give you at least a quick update on where we are with those goals, because we're pretty proud of them. First goal was increase the number of industry-related credentials earned by our students. Secondly, we wanted to revitalize our career and technical student organizations at both the middle school and high school. And then thirdly, we want to develop and strengthen our relationships with our industry partners. And so just to give you a quick update on that, last year, the last school year, our credential attainment percentage was seven percent. That means that of the potential credentials that could have possibly been earned, seven percent, or ninety-nine total credentials were earned all through, through the whole program area. Really, that's a really low number, and that was one reason why that was our number one goal, is to increase that. I'm pleased to say that through the first semester, our credential attainment this year is already at thirty percent. We have already, students have already earned two hundred and one total credentials as opposed to ninety-nine all of last school year. So we're going to see that number go up substantially too this spring. So we're pretty excited about that and really proud of our teachers and our students for the work that's been put in. Just to let you know, what are some of those credentials? You see some of them here, Beef Quality Assurance, the Federal Aviation Administration, that is a drone pilot. That's the first time ever we had a student successfully earn that credential this past fall. The FEMA, the National Incident Management System, with our public safety classes, they earned those credentials. NCCR is the construction. The OSHA 10-hour, we're having students get OSHA certified in general construction, general industry and agriculture. Serve Safe, we had students be successful in that. Youth Quality Care for Animals, that's another new credential that we'll be getting. And then, of course, our new EMT classes, they're going to come out with the potential to earn credentials in Basic Life Support, Stop the Bleed, Emergency Medical Responder, and Emergency Medical Technician. So we're really, really excited about the direction of that. Next, our CTE student organizations. One of the things that we wanted to do was to really bring this back. That's one of the things that the pandemic really hit hard. And so, and there was an emphasis on bringing Career and Technical Student Organizations back, and not just to say that they have a club to go to, but to really let them get involved. And that's exactly what has been done. This year, first time ever, we had an FFA chapter chartered at our middle school. That's pretty awesome. Agriculture has been there off and on for the past fifteen-plus years, but an FFA chapter has never been there. And this is the first, and we're really excited about that. Same with our Skills USA chapter. Skills USA chapter was chartered at the middle school this year. In addition, Skills has been at the high school for a few years, historically just with the construction program. This year, we had students in EMT, Drone Technology, Photography and Digital Design, and Construction. And they all participated at local, regional, and state levels. And it's worth noting that this was all done under the direction of first or second-year CTE teachers. We're really excited about that. Just to give you a quick update, can't not do that, these three ladies are high school students. They participated, first time ever participating in this. This is a photography, career development event, and they placed third, fourth, and fifth individually in the state of North Carolina, which is pretty awesome. And we'll look towards even better things next year. Here's our middle school, first year ever doing anything with skills at the middle school. Took eight students up there, seven of them medaled. Just two or three were state winners. And again, it's just, really goes to show the enthusiasm that these students have for it. We're really excited about it. I mean, this young lady here, she won first place in the state extemporaneous poster, and basically is given a topic. She has to draw a poster right there in front of the judges based on a theme and everything else, and she was number one. So we're real happy and real proud of them and the work that Ms. Hale's been doing. And then lastly, our middle school FFA chapter, it's the largest club at the middle school. Ms. Hacker's done a fantastic job. Just this weekend, they were participating up in Burlington at the State Envirathon. They were second in the region and went and competed at the state tractor judging and everything else, but really was a nice ceremony chartering. We had state officials coming down from Raleigh and did that. So really excited about the direction of our Career and Technical Student Organizations. And then finally, that last goal, Business and Industry Relationships. We renewed and expanded our work with our local business advisory council, with Pamlico County Economic Advisory Board, the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board, Small Business Center, working with Community College, working with NC Works. Again, our Career Development Coordinator is really doing a great job. Those who were able to go to the career fair, it was well-attended and really had a good showing over there, so we're real proud of that. We signed an educational partnership agreement with FRC East. We really want to open those doors and get students who are interested in possible careers with them lined up with jobs. And that's something we were also talking about with the Community College at the career fair. So that was a great conversation we were able to have, and just frequent contacts with local industry. Nutrien, we've got two interns over there right now. We want to continue that relationship, BSH, FRC East, and others. All right. I had to, I couldn't not say that about it. I wanted to give you that update. And so now, we're just going to talk, quick highlights onto actually what's changing with our local application that we have to submit. The allotments and budget planning, the program report codes, there's three of them. PRC 13, which is months of employment for CTE. We, based on our, the formula and our ADM, we qualify for one hundred and thirteen months of employment, and that is what pays our CTE teacher salaries. PRC 14, the allotment this year looks to be around thirty-two thousand dollars, and those are state funds. And the federal funds are approximately, the official final number hasn't been released, but it's going to be around twenty-five thousand dollars for the federal funds. So essentially, what we're submitting with this application is a budget, how we'll be using these monies. They're used, we use this for salaries. These two PRCs are used for professional development, supplies and materials for our programs. They also, we've helped fund some of our students going and taking these trips. It's amazing. Some of them, you know, had never been in an elevator that went higher than two floors, is what I was just told. So I was, I always love taking students on trips and giving them opportunities to see things and do, and, you know, just grow personally. Pretty awesome. Couple of adjustments to the local plan, and again, there are few. Last year, we put in some new programs, an Aggie program at the middle school, nutrition and wellness at the middle school, public safety and EMT. Those are new programs that were just put in. This year, we're going to make some slight changes. We're not taking any of those away, but adding to. We're very fortunate to have a licensed, qualified NCCR HVAC instructor, and we're going to put that to good use. We're going to start offering those classes. In lieu of some of the carpentry, we're going to offer HVAC, also putting in woodworking. We applied for a CTE program enhancement, up, modernization grant this past year, which we got. We're able to update some of our shop tools. And then finally, we're going to be offering Adobe Academy this coming year. That Adobe Academy, you've been hearing us mention digital design. This is going to be similar, but the Adobe Academy offers students opportunity to have a, get a credential in Adobe Photoshop and Illustrator. And so that's the reason to, we're moving in that direction, because they're going to take the class anyway. Let's leave with an industry credential, particularly in something like Photoshop or Illustrator. We're pretty excited about that. So that's a change. And then finally, major clarity is something Mr. Kerrwin talked about, start something we started using this year, and we're going to continue. We're writing that, putting that addition into the grant application, because this is our Career Development Planning Program. All students in grades six through twelve have been introduced to the program already. And basically, it helps them create a four-year plan to plan for the courses they'll take, the program areas they're interested in, potential career pathways, scholarship applications, name it. It's in there. So we're really impressed with the program and want to continue to use that. So that was the fast and furious CTE local application update and proposal. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have now at this point about it.
For the, the months of employment, you said one hundred and thirteen months.
Yes, sir.
Does that include all CTE instructors?
It does. It includes all CTE instructors. If this CTE instructor or support staff, they can be paid with months of employment. The director cannot be paid with months of employment, so that's basically the only way it can be used. And if we don't have, you know, if there's a surplus in those, we can convert that to, those months of employment gets converted to money, which goes into PRC 14 for supply. So in the event that we have, we don't use every single month, you can convert even a part of a month if you had that left over to be used in fourteen. That's how that works.
And that covers, when you say months, we're talking about the full, a hundred percent of their salary or?
Yes, yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions? Good question.
The attorney said that the next time you have a career fair, that she would love a table. She let us set up a table.
Okay, well, that'd be great. I think that's fantastic. We will absolutely, usually in April, so get you on the calendar.
And by the way, that was phenomenal, that career fair. And I told the high school, that was a really good career fair. It's great. Good job for the ones that did everything setting that up.
Any other questions? Appreciate your time and attention. We do just want to, I guess, have that approved.
Yes, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the local application for career and technical education for the 23-24 school year.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and motion carries. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you very much. And I gave y'all, put one of these at your spot. Basically, we gave one of these to every one of our students, particularly our rising freshmen. On the back, this QR code will take you to a site that we're using, basically like an online catalog that tells about all the program areas. We're going to hope to expand this website in the future to include videos and pictures of students who have a really good idea of what it is that they can sign up for at high school. Thank you.
Thank you. This doesn't happen that often, but no finance tonight, so I guess the earlier news set the stage, right?
I gave him a little bit.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 7, Governance. Ms. Jackson?
Okay, I know it seems like we were just talking about this, and we were, but the term for Miss Sherry Matter on the Pamlico Community College Board of Trustees expires on June 30th. So they have asked that we reelect her, since she just, I think she's been there, what, two months? So anyway, that's my recommendation.
Any questions on this? All right, entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hands. All right, motion carries. All right, Mr. Dudley?
I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education, entering to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143-318.11A1 and the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and GS 115C-402. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1. Confidential personnel matters as provided in NCGS 143-318.11A1 5 and 6 and 115C-319. And to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right, have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be in closed session 6:45.
Active psoriatic arthritis can slow me down. Now, SkyRizy helps me get going. Along with clearer skin, SkyRizy helps with less joint pain, stiffness, swelling and fatigue in just four doses a year after two starter doses.
Serious allergic reactions and an increased risk of infections or a lower ability to fight them may occur. Tell your doctor if you have an infection or symptoms, had a vaccine or plan to.
Ask your doctor about SkyRizy to treat your skin and joint symptoms so you can get going. Learn how Happy could help you save.
All right, we're back from closed session. So the first thing that I'm gonna do tonight is read a letter that was presented to us in closed session tonight. Members of the Pamlico County Board of Education, tonight I respectfully submit my resignation for the purpose of retiring. My retirement will be effective September first, two thousand twenty-three. the purpose of retiring. My retirement will be effective September 1st, 2023. While words cannot express my gratitude to this board and the community, I'm excited to begin my new chapter. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to serve the state of North Carolina and the Pamlico County community for 34 years. If I can be of any assistance during this transition, please do not hesitate to contact me. Respectfully, Lisa F. Jackson, Superintendent. Regretfully, we accept it.
Thank you.
I was going to say no, we don't accept it. You're here till we decide to leave. We can't do that.
That's all right. Thank you.
But after a very good closed session, and I can say heartfelt from all seven members of this board, we are honored to have you as our superintendent.
Thank you.
We hate to lose you, but all good things must come to an end at some time. So, and I think Eric said, and Jamie said to you sometime, change is tough, but change is one thing that's always constant.
That's right.
But again, we thank you for your service, definitely to the children of Pamlico County. It's been, it's been great. With that, we did have, and I didn't realize until I looked at what the time was, we did have a very good lengthy discussion, but it was a very good discussion by all seven board members. We received some very good advice from Ms. Hidge, our attorney, on moving forward with our next steps as the Board of Education of Pamlico County. So with that, we do have a couple of action items that we want to approve at this time. So our first one, I'm going to ask Mr. Gibbs if he will entertain us with a motion.
I move to have the administration to do a survey to get, to go to stakeholders in regards to the superintendent search.
All right. So we have a motion for our administration to help develop a survey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries, and we will communicate with the administration. Rachel will help, is going to help with a lot of that on helping the administration in development of this survey to all stakeholders who will be involved in this new superintendent search. Speaking of the search, we had a very good discussion on that, and we'd like to take action at this time. And I'm going to ask Eric if he will present us with a motion.
I move that the board direct our board attorney to obtain no fewer than three quotes from agencies, including Pointer's rule, that can assist with the superintendent search.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. With that being said, the next action item that we're going to take, if everybody will look at your calendars, and what we have discussed is going to be, we'd like to look at Monday, Monday or Tuesday of next week. I think Monday would be the best time. And what we have asked Rachel to assist with is, including Pointer's rule, is to have quotes from, no fewer than three, including Pointer's rule, quotes for the superintendent search. So next Monday, would everyone be available at six o'clock at the same time? You can't do six on Monday. What, how about Tuesday?
Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday is the only times I can make. I have meetings on both of those nights.
Would Wednesday at six work for everybody?
Ballgames.
Ballgames will not be on Wednesdays. They'll be Tuesdays or Thursdays. Would Wednesday at six work for everybody?
I can make Wednesday.
Are we doing it Monday or not?
Will Wednesday work? Are you available Wednesday at six?
Yes. I'm available Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Your agenda is wide open.
So you want to do it Wednesday?
Jamie, I know you're getting close to graduation. Will Wednesday work for you?
I can make it work. Just can't stand any kind of.
How about earlier? Would five o'clock be better?
Well, six o'clock is fine. I just, Wednesday has to be the day. Outside of Wednesday, I can't do it.
But if earlier would, would work better for people?
But you are good on Wednesday. Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. Would earlier work better for you with your graduation schedule, or six, five or six?
We can move it at five.
Five? Helen, are you okay with five? Here's.
I can hear five. Five.
Okay. Both of us will be coming in about that same time.
That's May 10th.
All right. So Rachel, I'm sure I need a motion for that. So I need a motion to call a special meeting, and that'll be Wednesday, May 10th, at five o'clock here in the boardroom.
Motion.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. And Rachel, I'm going to ask that you help assist with Ms. Jackson and Tiffany in setting the agenda for that.
Sure.
All right. I'm just, I'm making sure I covered everything. All right, moving on to other actions following closed session. I need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as amended.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, raise your right hand. You see our meeting dates for the next time, so make sure you put on there, May 10th, five o'clock, special meeting here in the boardroom, and we'll make sure a reminder notice gets sent to everybody before Wednesday, just as a reminder for this meeting. If there's no other discussions or anything we need to talk about, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Anybody, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Make sure I do this bow to him.